Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. And we're going to call on Commissioner Turner to lead us in prayer, and then Commissioner Jeff Jordan will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we're thankful for another beautiful day that you've given us, and we're thankful for all the blessings that you've been able to provide for each one of us and our families, Lord. With the decisions that we're making today, Lord, I ask that you give each one of us a sense of confidence in our position, Lord, and that we're able to dialogue and represent the citizens of Rutherford County in an attitude and a behavior that's pleasing to you, Lord. So I just ask that when we're presenting our positions that each one of us treat opposing positions with respect and dignity and honor, where we're able to represent our constituents, and they're proud of the way that we conducted ourselves today, Lord. I ask that you be with our troops overseas, Lord, and those that are protecting us that are in dangerous areas, Lord, and oftentimes don't see their families. So I just ask that you extend your shield of protection around them and their families, Lord, and give them a piece about what's going on and where their families are in these difficult times. I ask this in the name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and we're God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
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 Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Jeff Phillips.
Mayor, I've reviewed those minutes. I'll find them in order and move for their approval.
Second by Commissioner Sandlin. Did anyone have any corrections or additions? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now we're going to call on Commissioner Joyce Ely for a special presentation to our Finance Department. Come forward. All of the employees of the Finance Department, come join Ms. Ely at the podium.
The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to Rutherford County by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The comprehensive annual financial report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the comprehensive annual financial report. There are seventeen of these plaques on display in the finance office going back to 1995. So these plaques represent a long history of excellence in financial reporting. So this plaque represents what Mrs. Nolan and her staff are doing to continue that legacy. So I will present this award to Mrs. Nolan, our Finance Director, and ask her to introduce her staff.
I will. Thank you. Thank you. Thank y'all. It's an achievement. This award is only good for one year. So every year, we are going through our processes, but the accomplishment couldn't have been done without the dedicated services of these men and women behind me. I'd like to introduce them to you. Elaine Short, I've got them written down because I don't know where they'll be. Elaine Short, y'all just wave to them. Teresa Jolly, Fay Ulam, Linda Godsey, Chrissy Carruthers, Sue Hollinsworth, Susan Thompson, I think is out today, Sharon Richards, Robert Brown, Jennifer Henson, and Scott Magnar. Now, I'm going to ask you to do one other thing. All those that, and Nancy Jolly who takes care of all of us, I'm sorry. Those that do payroll, raise your hand. Okay, these are all the ladies that take care of the payroll. Now, understand that those that are watching, it's, do I? Did I not go Cheryl?
That's okay.
Cheryl! I'm sorry, Cheryl. Even writing them down, I mess up. Okay, anyway, we do all the payroll for schools, highway, and the county general. We take care of the whole county. And also, those that handle accounts payable, pay the bills. Yep. And those that take care of all the assets. Okay. But I also want to thank the Office of Information Technology that keeps our computers operational because without those, we could not do our work. And I also would like to thank you sitting in front of me, and the county mayor, for your interest and support in planning and conducting the operations of Rutherford County Government in a responsible, in a progressive manner. So I give kudos to y'all. Oh, yeah, that's right, Fay is a former Commissioner. I would ask, some of my staff, about half my staff could retire. So that's concerning, but we'll have two retirees coming in in this next fiscal year. So I would like to honor those, Fay Ulam and Elaine, they'll be coming back through. So we need your prayers. But thank you.
Thank you very much for a job well done, and we really appreciate that so, so much. Can't do it without you. Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comments. And we have twenty-four people that wish to speak this morning, so without objection, if any one of you object, you can certainly say so right now. Without objection, I'd like to suggest that we allow everyone to speak that has signed up. Does anyone object to that suggestion? That being the case, we will start. We'll remind all the speakers that you are limited to three minutes, and we do have our little timer on up here. And I don't think it would offend any of us if you choose not to use your entire three minutes. That would be okay. Might even be preferable. But anyway, so you come forward and give us your name and address, and then make your comments respectfully, please. Our first person that wishes to speak is Sheriff Robert Arnold.
Robert Arnold, 552 Osborne Lane. I don't plan on doing the three minutes. I just want to ask each and every one of y'all today to please remember the county employees when we're going through this with the pay raises within the budget. We have the school board, they've already got in their budget their pay raises, and the county clerk's office, the court clerk's office, the register of deeds office has it in their budget. Those are fee offices, so they're not kind of within your budgets that you're going to be voting on today. What you're voting on today is going to be the county general employees. And so I ask for you to please consider these employees because everybody else in the county general, or the county government, is getting their pay raises. Elected officials are getting it because it's mandated by the state. So I ask for you to please consider these employees that are outside of those other budgets because they deserve it as well. Everybody knows that I'm an advocate for my employees. Every year, I try to put a pay raise within my budget because I know what it's like to pay childcare and other things, groceries, that keep going up. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Captain Bill Cope.
After a recent discussion with other county employees and directors, I was asked to share my perspective on the issue of wage increase. I've been an employee of Rutherford County Government for fifteen years, and I'm just an example of many dedicated employees we have here. I came from the State's Department of Corrections fifteen years ago because I recognized growth and opportunity. I stayed because of my love for the community and my small yet significant role in our local law enforcement. Most of my fifteen years has been in a leadership role with both the sheriff's office and the Correctional Work Center, so I am very aware of the issues, grievances, success and failure rates of employees within our department. In the field of corrections, attrition and turnover rates are close to sixteen percent nationwide. Ours was seventeen percent in the last twelve months. Most of our staff that terminated employment with the Correctional Work Center left within their first year. Although we didn't lose institutional knowledge when the staff terminated employment, the county did not receive a return on its recruitment and training investment. The Correctional Work Center is viewed as and used as a model by the Tennessee Corrections Institute as to what each and every county correctional facility and its staff should emulate. We are also the only work center in the state of Tennessee that's accredited through the American Correctional Association, which also puts us in five percent of jails in the United States.
Keep going, that was an error.
With that information, you have to ask yourself two questions. Why would anyone want to leave? And with those accolades and being held at those high standards, where are we on the national median scale for annual wages? I provided a graph for you that will answer both of those questions. Our employees are less than ten percent on the national average. We found indications that dissatisfaction with wages is the highest determining factor contributing to employee decision to leave the work center. There are a number of steps that our agency and the commission can take to improve retention. Although it is not realistic to assume that all turnover can be eliminated, funds spent to improve retention can reduce turnover and offset associated cost. Staff dissatisfaction with wages is strongly influencing employees' decisions to leave Rutherford County Government. That is a factor that is out of our scope and certainly out of our control as administrators, and only you all can correct that factor. Thank you.
Next is Mac Nolan.
My name is Mac Nolan. I live at 831 Allen Road, and I am the solid waste director for Rutherford County. We have a perception problem, stereotyping. You've all heard the old phrase, "We've got one man working and five men watching." That's the government mentality. Well, let me explain that away for you. Rutherford County landfill from the year 2000 to 2008 averaged losing $470,000 a year. 2008 to 2009, we only lost $30,000. Now, we're actually profitable. The workhouse used to run the litter crew. Mr. McElroy passed away. They didn't have it within their budget to run the litter crew. Bart Smith came to see me. We need some help. Since 2010, we started running the litter crew vans to help the workhouse. In 2010, our contractor that we had employed to haul our recycle and sell our rebate and give back to us went out of business. So not only did we not spend $300,000 a year in hauls, we generated $300,000 in additional revenue. In doing all this, we have not added one single employee, not one. We've got the same headcount we had in 2008. You're talking about property tax increase, which may affect employee raises. The solid waste department gets absolutely zero in property taxes. So if you tie the raises to these employees to the property tax, you're hurting my individuals that have generated over a million dollars a year in savings over the last five years by stepping up to the plate and doing more. So I ask you, when you're working on your property tax increase, keep the raises separate from it. Thank you.
Nicole Lester.
My name is Nicole Lester. I live at 560 Osborne Lane, and I am the administrator of elections for Rutherford County, Tennessee. I'd like to say that I was born and raised here in Murfreesboro, so I'm a hometown girl. I've lived in Rutherford County almost my entire life, minus one year right after I first got married. I come from a family of government workers. Many of you know my father, Hiram Lester, who worked for forty years for the Murfreesboro Police Department. And I grew up in the family of a government worker, knowing that, you know, he could have been making more money working somewhere else. But he loved his job, and he loved people, and that's why he did what he did. Over the past ten years, I've worked in three different areas of Rutherford County Government. I worked in the Chancery Court Clerk's office back in 2002, 2003 for minimum wage while I was in law school. And after I graduated law school and got my law degree, I clerked for Chancellor Robert E. Corleone III in the Chancery Court. At that time, that was 2004, 2005, I was earning $24,860. By comparison, other counties, both larger and smaller, were paying much more for the similar position for a legal clerk to a judicial officer, the judges and the chancellors. And some of them were making over $50,000 a year. So Rutherford County has been behind other surrounding counties for many years. Currently, I just want to say this pay raise does not affect me one way or another. Very similar to the elected officials, my pay is actually based on state guidelines and the population of Rutherford County. I'd like to speak to all the employees that I interact with, not just the employees in the election office, but we interact with employees from other departments on a daily basis, such as the mayor's office, human resources, the trustees office, county clerk, planning and engineering, register of deeds, and property assessor. This is all to make sure that the elections go smoothly. No one really knows what it takes to plan and coordinate an election until you've actually done it. I didn't know myself. I've learned so much in two years, and we have such dedicated employees in our office. They're self-motivated, they're driven, they want to ensure that every citizen of Rutherford County has the opportunity to easily exercise their constitutional right to vote. They work long hours, early mornings, late nights, day after day after day. They sacrifice time with their family, their friends, their pets, their loved ones, and time away from other things that they enjoy doing, any of their normal hobbies that they like to do, especially during election time. They sacrifice to serve the citizens of Rutherford County. This pay raise is not about greed. It's about bringing Rutherford County up to the level where it should be in the treatment and the pay of their employees. The HR department has spent the better part of the last three years or more conducting a very thorough, sensible, and relevant pay plan comparison with many counties in Tennessee that are comparable to the size of Rutherford County, both larger and smaller than Rutherford County. In the past three years, the city of Murfreesboro has given over ten percent pay increases to their employees, and by comparison, Rutherford County has only given six percent in ten years. I'd like to mention that in the last ten years, the population of Rutherford County has grown by approximately 100,000, and that affects everything that we do as well, as far as the number of voters, the number of polling places, the time it takes to coordinate everything. And I would just like to speak to, on the behalf of my employees, and as well as the other employees that we interact with in other county departments, please consider this. Thank you.
Next, David Jones.
My name is David Jones. I live at 919 Allen Road, and I have been in the building coach department for twenty-five years. In those twenty-five years, we have issued 17,481 permits for new homes in our county. This year, we've issued 276. That's fifty-five new homes a month going in our county. It indicates to me that we have a strong economy, and we're one of the fastest-growing counties in Tennessee. People often say they have moved here for our good schools and a quality of life. High quality of services and low cost of living always will mean growth. To provide those services and the demands that the county taxpayers deserve, we must maintain competitive salary increases for our employees. Our employees are dedicated and highly qualified to provide these services. We do not want to lose our investment of time and cost of training due to lack of competitive salaries. The salaries for Rutherford County start out a state-certified building inspector, $12,000 less than Murfreesboro City starts out, and $5,000 less than Smyrna, Town of Smyrna, starts out. In the past year's budgets have put off increases for county employees. These employees are taxpayers also, and they must provide for their families as you do. A vote of no does not support the needs of our county's future growth. I urge you to please vote yes for the needs of our county employees and taxpayer services as recommended by Mayor Burgess. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I'm John Bratcher, 2926 Longford Drive, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. I am clerk and master of the Chancery Court. I've worked for the citizens of Rutherford County in that position for over twenty years. I've served with three county mayors and, I suppose, dozens of county commissioners. Rutherford County is a great place to live and work, and a big reason for that is what I call progressive/conservative county government. That is a government that works hard to meet the citizens of the county and does it in a fiscally responsible, conservative way. I think we have the best county government in the state. The county as a whole is growing. We have made the choice to promote that growth. That means more schools, more fire and police protection, more roads and other infrastructure, more employees, and, yes, more court cases. The county is frugal. It watches the people's money. The Chancery Court is a case in point. In the past ten years, the number of cases has grown by twenty-five percent. During that time, only one new full-time employee has been added to our staff. The Chancery Court pays for itself in fees and litigation taxes. Additionally, we have collected over $2.6 million in delinquent property taxes in just the past year. This is not to mention our primary job of dealing with 3,000 new lawsuits filed each year. This is, by the way, a thousand more than the Chancery Court in Davidson County. We're able to do this because we have educated, intelligent, dedicated, trained employees. In order to keep these employees, we must maintain a good work environment, which I think we do, and we must also pay them what they are worth. Thank you.
Emily Mitchell.
Last time I came here to talk, this was very intimidating, so I have my soapbox ready today. Thank you. I am Emily Mitchell. I live at 2626 Big Eagle Trail. I am a Rutherford County teacher. I teach first grade at David Urie Elementary, and all the first graders are shorter than me, and I prefer it that way. I came here not to ask you for anything, but to thank you for all your hard work that you have put into this budget. I really appreciate all the problems that you've tried to overcome in order to make a workable budget for everybody. What I've seen by coming to these meetings in the past several months is that not everything is either a black or gray, or a black or white issue. There's, most of the decisions that you have to make are in a huge gray area, and I appreciate the time that you take to try to figure that out. I do not know Mayor Burgess or Sheriff Arnold, but I would like to thank them for what they have done. At the last meeting, there was a gentleman that came up, and he criticized them for not being Republican enough. And the more I thought about that, the more to me that would be considered a compliment because he is going, both of those gentlemen are going beyond what is good for their political beliefs, and they're doing what is better for all of us. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. So what I get from that is that just because we have an R or a D behind our names does not need to be that all our decisions are made in that way. Actually, there should be a big uppercase W that stands for "we," "we" the citizens of Rutherford County. And thank you very much for your time. If anybody needs my soapbox, I have it over at the pew. Thank you.
My name is Sonya Stevenson, and I live at 2216 Higgins Lane. I am the HR director for the county. Good morning, citizens, commissioners, and Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you for your service. You have a difficult job trying to balance the budget while trying to meet the needs of the employees, the desires of your constituents, and also the platform by which you ran. Rutherford County is the second-largest employer in the county. However, for years, the county general employees' raises have been less than competitive. Cost of living increases annually for the last six years have averaged three percent in the private sector and state, six percent at the Board of Ed, while the county general has averaged 1.8 percent. For two years in a row, the county general employees went without raises to ease the tax burden, but only the county general employees. Of the 5,000-plus total employee population, the 800-plus county general employees have been treated differently. Employers nationwide give their employees cost of living and/or pay increases, as does social security, pension plans, nonprofits, and private industry. The county is the second-fastest-growing and the fifth-largest county in the state. Within the last thirty years, the county has grown 212 percent. Since 1980, the population has grown from 84,000 to 262,000. This increase reflects the growing needs of your constituents. Even though the total population does not own property, they do require services provided by the county, whether it be from the EMS, public safety, animal control, or one of our other service departments. Within this growth period, the private sector and self-employed were reaping the benefits. Now that the economy has taken a detour, the employees' benefits have become a major topic of discussion. While the economy is not where it was in 2006, it is trending upwards, and jobs are being offered. The Chamber states that Rutherford County is the third in the nation for job growth, and employment is up 6.8 percent. Recent job searches for Murfreesboro show that employers are offering competitive salaries, health benefits, and retirement options for full-time employees. It also shows that 3,000-plus full-time jobs are available within thirty It also shows that 3,000-plus full-time jobs are available within 30 miles of Murfreesboro. Our employees provide valuable services such as medical care, safety, rehabilitation, and many other services daily that the citizens deserve and need. It is important to note that our county employees are among the top contributors to United Way to help in programs all over the county. Full-time employees who are vested do draw a retirement from the county. The average pension check of a county general employee is $593 a month. With the projection of our population doubling by 2040, and the fact that 23% of our employees could retire today, we need to make plans for the future now. In order for the county to maintain services, we have to be competitive and attract high potential employees. You have a hard decision to make, but I respectfully ask that you approve the expanded table which provides our employees a praise, a raise that is long overdue. Thank you.
Brian Robertson.
Morning, commissioners. My name is Brian Robertson. I'm the technology, beeped, I beeped myself. The beeper got beeped. I've been in this, my name is Brian Robertson. I'm the Chief Information Officer, that's it, I'm done, for Rutherford County Government, and I live at 914 Scepter Drive. I've been in this position since 1996, where I think we've built a strong team of 18 technology professionals in a, in a government technology department that I believe to be one of the best in the, in the state of Tennessee. I'd like to speak in favor of continuing our compensation plan. Our department's purpose is to support the technology needs of all the other departments in serving their purpose. And as we protect and improve data assets and business practices, we need the best people possible to accomplish this. The technology job pool in which we compete to hire these people and retain these people is highly, highly valued and highly competitive job market. Our technically skilled employees know full well that we make 10 to 20% less than salaries in the private sector that we could make in corporate America. But we came to the county for good reasons, and we stay for good reasons. And primarily among those is our job security, which has been, I think, the county's trump card in retaining good employees and in competing with private sector for these technology jobs in particular. Our salaries have paced along reasonably well at this 10 to 15, 20% gap through the years. But a larger gap would change the attractiveness equation for employees as they consider working with us. Even in, even in its current state, one year ago, we lost a senior-level position to a local utility district where he went for similar benefits and a 15% raise. And we also lost our senior programmer, two years ago, to private industry, where she is able to telecommute and, and was able to receive a 15% raise. Technology salaries are on the rise, and people are hiring. Job site Dice.com reports that IT manager salaries have increased 6.2% in 2012. And network manager salaries have increased 11.2%. And you see that across all the other, within all the disciplines. The Nashville Technology Council reports that there are 838 technology-related jobs advertised in, in, in middle Tennessee in the first quarter of 2013. So our trump card has been job security. And that is, job security is less of a deciding factor in staying with the county when technology job availability is on the rise. It's not as scary to venture out into another position when, when you have people hiring and paying, paying well. So commissioners, as you balance these really tough priorities, I encourage you to please continue your, our compensation plan so that our department can continue to provide excellent service and stability to our technology resources. Thank you.
Mike Nunley.
I'm here to ask for your support for the pay plan as well as all, as you've heard from all the rest of these people. But I'd like to ask you to think about a little bit different perspective. Rutherford County employees are real people. You can look around that here and see that. They're taxpayers, they live in your districts. And they raised their families in Rutherford County. So they, they have really bought into Rutherford County as you have. Rutherford County is an employer. Rutherford County does not have to be an employer. Rutherford County is an employer because it chose to be an employer. But making that decision, what would Rutherford County be if you chose not to be an employer? What would be left? I think that if you're going to be an employer, you have a responsible employer. 4,200 county employees are getting raises. 800 may get a raise depending upon what you do here today. So I just ask you to do what you think is right and what you think is fair. Many of the 700 people or 800 people that are not getting raises work in public safety. And I think I know a little bit about public safety. These are the people that you call when you need help. These are the people that make decisions every day that affect the lives of people in this county. And they don't have time to debate their decisions. They have to make their decisions quickly, and they have to live with their decisions. And people may live because of those decisions, and unfortunately, some may die because of those decisions. So some of you out here know that earlier this week, I earned a new nickname at the ambulance service of Crash and Roll. And I can promise you that when that deputy came running to my vehicle, I felt like I had a friend. So those are the people that you call. We make 2,500 calls every month. You don't have to be a mathematician to figure out that within a few years, we're going to pick up somebody that you know or, or you're related to, or maybe even you. So think about that. But I want you to be assured that all 7 or 800 of the employees that include the ones that don't work for public safety, they're charged every day with providing world-class service to the citizens. You just saw an award earlier for like 10 or 12 employees. The rest of them do that too. So don't look upon your employees as a liability. Just do what's right, do what's fair. This is my 38th budget. I have yet to have somebody tell me this is a good budget year, go for it. It's always a bad budget year. Just do what's right. Thank you.
Doug Demossi.
Good morning, Mayor Burgess and commissioners. My name is Doug Demossi, and I live at 2510 Tiffany Court in Murfreesboro. And I'm the Planning Director for Rutherford County. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you regarding the fiscal year 2013, 2014 budget. As a citizen and taxpayer of Rutherford County, I can assure you that I don't want to pay any more taxes than absolutely necessary. That being said, the unfortunate reality is that the tools we use to do our jobs simply cost more than they did in the past. We buy the same items everyone else does. They cost more for the residents, they cost more for us as well. I've worked in the public sector, sector almost all of my professional life, and know that we constantly try to accomplish more with less. I've been with Rutherford County since 2006. And even during my relatively short time with the county, our department has lost two full-time positions. But we do strive to provide the same level of service as when those positions were occupied. Rutherford County has grown by over 200% since the 1980 census. Based on the projections in our comprehensive plan, our population is projected to be over 10, about 410,000 by 2035. Because of this, our workloads will continue to increase, especially as the economy continues to, to improve. In addition to this, we have to comply with all the unfunded mandates that originate from either the federal or the state level in regards to our stormwater program. These are regulations that simply have to be followed. We have no choice in the matter if we want to stay compliant with these mandates. Although we have accomplished much in the last three to four years with the adoption of our comprehensive plan and our new zoning ordinance, there is still much that needs to be done. Funding this budget as presented will allow us the opportunity to accomplish these goals as well as to provide services to the county residents at the level they have come to expect from us over the years. Thank you for your time.
Rena Scudder.
Good morning. My name is Rena Scudder. I live at 403 Peacock Avenue here in Murfreesboro. I want to thank you for all the hard work that everyone has done over this year's budget. I have attended several of the budget meetings and also insurance, and have witnessed the hard work that all of you have done for us. I also appreciate the cooperation that you have shown in this process. It's been a very difficult year. Meeting the needs and demands of our county residents has been a daunting one. And through compromise from all of you, this budget has finally been made. Now the final vote is here. I urge all of you to please vote yes for this budget. You have other decisions to make for us in Rutherford County. And we thank you for all your hard work and dedication.
Dorsey Meeks.
My name is Dorsey Meeks. And I think that the mayor, commissioners, and sheriff are a bit misled. They're actually voted in by the taxpaying community to do the best job and take intellectually possible to move this county forward in the most sensible and inexpensive way possible to make this county the best place to live. That would make us look better and draw more outside people into the community because they would know that our officials are actually for the community, and they wouldn't see the officials who can't cut expenditures at the expense of our residents. Since 2008, the county has increased property taxes 18.2% when our economy was stagnant, and most people I talked to haven't had a raise in years. That makes me wonder if the mayor and commissioners and sheriff have done the best job possible for our taxpayers. They're sworn in to make intelligent decisions for the future of our taxpayers and their children. The only thing I see are reasons for tax increases is not to help the taxpayers, but to help the mayor, commissioners, and sheriff personally. I've been a resident of Rutherford County since 1969, and I might add, also a property owner. I have gotten used to the arbitrary hand in my pocket. And now I find the arbitrary arm in my pocket, and I'm wondering what comes next. The mayor and commission, this last year, voted for a vice mayor, which we've never had before, who makes $80,000 a year, which I can't seem to find exactly what his job description is. I don't need a vice mayor hard to tell me that you're raising my taxes. I've already figured that out. I again offer to donate my time and knowledge of frugality to assist every commissioner, the mayor, and the sheriff on their budget plans for betterment of a greater Rutherford County. It isn't going to entice outside people into this community to see officials who can't cut expenditures, but instead asking for more money from the residents. And lastly, I hope all have a plan for the community's residents when they're out of their homes because of higher taxes, as in homeless. And God bless everybody here.
Kathy McMahon.
Good morning. I'm Kathy McMahon. I live at 1401 East Northfield Boulevard in Murfreesboro. I am a proud retired teacher, parent of grown children, sibling of another grown voter in this county, and also the daughter of one. We do pay taxes in many different ways. We're proud to pay taxes. We're, we're glad we actually own something that you can tax. To everything, there is a season. And today is the culmination of that season for planning our budget. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your hard work. I have attended meetings. I have heard budgets proposed. I have heard the mayor explain why he did what he did. I have seen where he, I have heard where he made cuts. I have seen department heads in there talking about it. They've already done a tremendous cutting job before it comes in front of the Budget Committee. Then I heard the Budget Committee talk about things. I heard them going back and forth about county needs. And thank you, Commissioner Ely. You have done a tremendous job of keeping that group on task and getting the job done. There are lots of things they'd like to put off for next year. Of course, we do that every year. There are things that we have already put off for next year, many, many times over. And it's time to get it done. The budget has had to face a bad downturn in the economy for a while. And thank goodness, it's beginning to turn up. We ask you to keep this county moving forward. This is a fabulous place to live. The tax increase we're talking about on my house, well, it's not even going to be this much because my house is not a $150,000 house. But on a $150,000 house, the increase would be $37.50 a year. That comes out to be $3.12 a month. And no, I don't want to pay it. But I also want services. And if I need help, I want the fire department to be there. Of course, I'm in the city. I want the police department, sheriff's folks, of course, I'm in the city. Thing is, not all my family is in the city. And I do drive to see them. I was out of the city limits just yesterday. We need services countywide. We are no longer a small rural county with people that are only going to stay here. They all grew up here, and they're going to stay here forever. We are growing at a tremendous rate because, because people come in and love us. I ask you today to keep Rutherford County as an incredible bargain. Charge us an extra $3 a month and give us more services, please. Thank you.
Alan Nichols.
My name is Alan Nichols. I live at 1046 Need Drive. I'm in Mr. Farley's district. I'm a lifelong resident of Rutherford County. I graduated from Oakland High School and MTSU. And I have the privilege of teaching at Central Magnet School. I also want to echo the sentiments of those who came before me to thank you for your time and commitment to this process. I know it has not been easy. I'm here today in support of the mayor's plan. I ultimately hope that we can prevent a cut in our services. And I hope that we can support those who support us on a daily basis. I would like to give a special shout-out to Commissioner Ely. Ms. Ely, you are a class act, and we do treasure you. Other than that, I appreciate your time, and I know that you'll make a wise decision today. Thank you.
Steve Schroeder.
Mayor, commissioners, neighbors. I'm Steve Schroeder. I live at 676 Cottonfield Lane, about two or three stones' throw from Gary Farley's house. I'd like to take a moment to thank our elected officials, the department heads, and the county employees for their service toward the community. This has been a challenging budget cycle and has required significant effort from all layers of the county government. This year's budget process has been less smooth than other years. You've been trying to get more done with constrained resources. The medical insurance issue and the property assessments and salaries are cases in point. Personally, I'd like to see SROs in all our schools. If we can't do that, let's get some additional SROs funded this budget cycle. And the school system and the sheriff's office can figure out where they're going to go to be most effective, and then we can backfill later. The main service provided by an SRO is the projection to the students of a positive, caring adult image wearing a law enforcement uniform. to the students of a positive, caring adult image wearing a law enforcement uniform. I think that things are a lot more difficult for kids now than when I grew up. Let's give them a break. I'd like to take a minute and talk about taxes and why we're in the fix we're in. Growth does not pay for itself, so we need taxes to pay for the cost of growth. New schools, new roads, bigger this, more that. The county's taxing authority is limited by the state to a wheel tax or a property tax. The county commission over several years ago, including then-commissioner Mike Sparks, asked our legislators for some fiscal flexibility, as about four times, as I remember. We needed a private act that had been approved by the Tennessee General Assembly and signed off by the governor. Our legislators at that time did not deliver. Senators Katron and Tracy are the remaining senators from that legislative team. Cities produce most of the growth. They don't normally collect all the fees associated with the infrastructure for growth. For example, Murfreesboro has allowed impact fees for infrastructure per the city charter, and to best of my knowledge, there is no collection for those impact fees. So if you'd like to get the better information, I suggest that you contact Senator Tracy, Senator Katron, or your city council, and they can give you an explanation as to why the growth doesn't pay for itself. The bottom line is, don't blame the county commission for a tax increase. They're just trying to get the job done. Thank you very much.
Sue Kane.
Good morning, mayor, county commissioners, and members of the audience. My name is Sue Kane. I live at 1707 Berkeley Street, and I'm a retired educator. I would like to thank you for the money that you have included in the budget for the SRO program. That program has been one of the greatest benefits this community has ever seen. I'm not doing this because of Sandy Hook. That was a sad situation, but that's not why I'm asking you to go ahead and pass the budget with that in it. I was teaching at LeVern High School when the SRO program was begun. I know what a benefit it was for us to have an SRO at LeVern High School. I was fortunate enough to work with Dan Goodwin, our SRO, and I watched him build relationships with the students. Our SRO program has been a model for that program, and our SROs have trained other SROs in other communities. Every school deserves its own SRO, and they shouldn't have to share. Thank you for making it possible. I also like to thank you for granting the money to build, equip, and staff the new Stewart's Creek High School. I had occasion to visit out there last week, and I'll tell you what, it's an awesome place. It's been a dream of mine for years, along with some other folks my age, that we have a high-tech, botched high school in Rutherford County, and we now have it thanks to you and thanks to the vision of the school board. For those students who can't go to college or don't want to go to college, this is a chance for them to choose a track or a trade, whatever you want to call it, because they have enough vocational opportunities in four years in one track that they can walk out of there and ride into a job. If you've not had a chance to go look at the place, make sure you go on August the 4th, or maybe you might be able to arrange a private tour. I don't know. But I certainly think the students and their parents will applaud both the building and the course offerings that they're going to be offered when they go out there. Thank you again for the chance to speak. Please vote yes on this year's budget. Thank you.
Lynn Duke.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Duke. I am the director of the Rutherford County Juvenile Detention Center, 1710 South Church Street. The Juvenile Detention Center has a total of 35 employees, two of which are part-time. After watching the public hearing and the budget meeting, I found myself in a position to want to share the following. I am incredibly proud of the general fund employees who work at the Juvenile Detention Center. You can rest assured that quality people are taking care of the youth who spend time with us. The Juvenile Detention Center has a first-rate training program, and we set high standards. As such, our employees have been recruited to law enforcement agencies in Chevival, Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Columbia, Metro-Davidson, Brentwood, Franklin, Hendersonville, TBI, Atlanta, and Washington DC. It's frustrating, time-consuming, and costly to train these great employees only to have them leave for more fertile ground. The Rutherford County Juvenile Detention Center has added numerous quality programming at no cost to the county. We've reduced our full-time employees, and we still maintain a rating as one of the top six juvenile facilities in the country. During the public hearing, citizens use terms like "be good stewards," "prioritize," "have fortitude," and "be responsible." I can tell you that the county general fund employees at the Juvenile Detention Center do that every day. Juvenile fund employees don't live in some sort of protective bubble. We experience the same hardships as the rest of Rutherford County. General fund employees struggle to make ends meet. We experience illness and large medical bills, debt issues, and bankruptcy. We've lost homes to fires, and when we do buy something, it's used, and we worry about our families' futures. General fund employees want their commissioners to hear their voices also. It is not fair or reasonable to continue to balance the budget on the back of the general fund employees. Please stop devaluing these employees. They deserve to be considered a high priority, not less essential.
Dr. Mike Williams.
Done already? Good morning. I'm Mike Williams. I live in Smyrna. I'm not going to tell you my address in case I upset some of you. Are you all okay? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just asked if they were okay, and about half your commissioners looked dead. I don't know what to say. I'm here because I support the budget resolution, and I support the increase in property taxes. Most of you, when you ran for office in the state of Tennessee and in this county, might have been asked one of three questions. First, you might have been asked, "Do you believe in a God?" Second, you were probably asked, "Do you believe in football?" And third, I'm almost certainly you were asked, "Are you going to raise my taxes?" Well, the time has come for you to have to answer the third one with a yes, and I hope you will, because we need that increase for three specific reasons. First, our rapid growth has caused a need to maintain and improve and expand our infrastructure. We don't expand it just for economic development, but for the quality of life of our citizens. Secondly, we have a phenomenal public education system in this county. I've lived all over the country. I'm going to tell you, it's a good one. And public education is the backbone of this nation. It's why we are who we are today. It's what will keep us being the best. But our public education system costs money. They need money, and we have some of the very best teachers in the state of Tennessee here. We even have nationally-known teachers here, and I don't think it's fair that our students have facilities that are not a good learning environment. I don't think it's right that we have students that are in temporaries. It's like herding them into a cattle car. It's an environment where it's very difficult for children to learn, and I want to see them have the best learning opportunities possible, and our teachers have the best facilities to teach them, and that's important. And third, our staff and public employees of this county work very hard. You know, working with the public can lead to a lot of pains in your sit-downer, and I haven't seen any of the staff I've known with a pain in their sit-downer that still wasn't smiling at the folks giving them the pain. And when I listened, I think it was Ms. Nolan, asked for her staff to show how many of them were, you know, paying the bills and how many of them were recording the assets, I was troubled that five of them are paying the bills and only two are recording the assets. This math doesn't add up. I think we need more revenue. So I support this increase for the sake of our staff, our schools, and our infrastructure. And I want to close with a little story. A circus came to town. You remember those days. Well, some of you do. Well, I got 10 seconds to tell you this, and I'm going to tell you. And there was a strong man in the circus, and that strong man had an act where he would take a lemon, and he'd squeeze that lemon, and he'd squeeze that lemon until every drop had come out. And then when there was nothing left in the lemon, he'd hold it up, and he'd say, "Is there anybody here who thinks he can get another drop out of the lemon? I'll give him $20 if I can." Finally, one guy climbed up, and he said, "I'll try." And he squeezed, and he squeezed, and he squeezed, and a drop came out. People were amazed. The strong man gave him the $20. He said, "How'd you do that?" The guy said, "Well, I'm a Rutherford County commissioner." Please, please, go ahead and increase our taxes. We need it. Thank you.
Terry Bradford.
Morning, Mayor Burgess, county commissioners, fellow employees, and interested citizens. I'm Terry Bradford, and I reside at 2145 Ravenwood Drive in the city of Murfreesboro. I'm also a 15-year county employee. I'm concerned about some of the proposals and rumors of proposals that are being considered here today regarding employee salaries and benefits. Concerned enough to stand before you, even though I'm using up my precious annual time, and even though I'm a heart patient who has an absolute phobia about speaking in public. So I am very grateful to see all the medical personnel out there in the office just in case. Some of our commissioners are being accused of self-service for considering raises and our benefits for county employees. Most, if not all, of those are dependent on their respective boards or fee offices for those raises and are not being considered in the county general budget. I understand why we don't want tax increases, but I fail to see why the county general employees have to fund any sacrifices. I don't understand why it's acceptable for 4,200 of our county employees to receive raises and 800 of us to forfeit those same raises. I'm not sure how, if you're in one of those protective positions, you could vote against the raises for the county general employees. Would it not be more appropriate to cut the raises across the board and give everybody something instead of one group sacrificing? We all give our utmost to the county, and we're frequently asked to complete the same task or increase workloads with less funding and/or less staff. We should all receive equal consideration. I myself am fortunate. I already have established retirement benefits. I'm not dependent on county insurance because I'm insured by my husband, but I am affected by raises or lack thereof, and I have been affected by that many times over the last 15 years. During my tenure, the county has undertaken expensive studies to try to bring us up to par, only to abandon that the very next year to keep taxes down. Nobody, including myself, wants a tax increase, but the fact is that avoiding a tax increase cannot always come at the expense of loyal county employees. At some point, there will be a tax increase, and it should be shouldered by the entire community, not by a select group of employees. If you can tell me that cutting my benefits will entirely benefit elderly citizens who have worked all their life and are in danger of losing their homes, I'll support it. Otherwise, I can't. In today's economy, insurance and retirement are very attractive to maintaining good employees. Help us keep good, loyal employees in the county. See us, hear us as people, and recognize our loyalty and reward it, please. Thank you very much for your service to the county.
Heather Brown.
My name is Ann Brown, and I guess I represent past and future people who have or have already lost their homes. We've reached the age of accountability, and the people are waking up, and we're going to hold people in positions accountable. Gone are the days of take, take, take at the public's expense. I'm either backing intelligent solutions, or I'm going to offer simple intelligent solutions. We are tired of a select few living basically like the Rockefellers at society's expense with really no explanation that makes sense as to why we're raising taxes. I'm personally tired of our children being used as the excuse to raise taxes. It's antiquated and downright insulting to people's intelligence. The pension situation, I agree with the employees having a 401K that the county matches. Getting rid of crossing guards puts our drivers and pedestrians at a much higher risk than not having enough SROs. I don't agree with more SROs. I think parents should take responsibility for their children and go to a citizen's police training, get gun permits, and police your children's schools. I'm sure there's plenty of parents out there that aren't working that have the time to do so. And I believe the parents also should help with the crossing guard situation. Our cops aren't gods. They are just men also. The mounted patrol bothers me. It needs to go. It's a useless expenditure and basically a health issue, as all I see they do is drop mounds of excrement on the grounds they're used on. Use that money for more police cars. And on that note, anyone with common sense knows we should replace police cars as needed, not a whole fleet. I mean, that makes no sense. A resident actually told me we have three police vehicles that sits in their residential neighborhood 365 days a year. It doesn't make sense. We have vehicles not being used to their fullest usage. If our sheriff's office was worried about the safety of your children, one thing they would require is CIT training for all their officers, and they would not drop their relationship with Mobile Crisis. I'm sure a lot of you don't know anything about that. Anytime an officer responds to crime, they deal with someone's mental health. We need to look at that. I don't think our sheriff should be asking for 30 to 40 new patrol cars. I mean, who exactly are we trying to impress? A benevolent office, sheriff's office, would not put that high-end expenditures on our community. I think we should let an outside, non-connected committee come in and have complete access to our officials' books, and I guarantee you that they can stop useless spending. Society is tired of officials policing themselves. I personally am. That's like asking the fox to watch the hen house. Our drug fund is the lowest it's been in a long time. The only reason I heard was, well, our drug dealers and drug addicts are getting smarter. That's nonsense. If we have anyone in our sheriff's office that feels they aren't smart enough to catch drug dealers and addicts, then society at large really needs to rethink who they are putting in there. And lastly, I do know we can attract competent, good employees for the county with an intact moral compass whose main objective is to help the community at large instead of lining their pockets at our community's expense. God bless you.
Scott Lewis. Okay, I don't see Mr. Lewis coming forward, so next is Steve Ayers.
Steven Ayers, Drake Lammers, real lifelong resident. I'm going to try to be real quick with this. Some of you already have heard, seen us in the paper. These persons... These proceedings, quite frankly, need to be suspended. At no time has this meeting been advertised as a public hearing. It's being held in the morning when folks can attend. Some folks obviously can, but the general public, I think, is left out of this process. That's wrong. We should have this meeting in the evenings when we normally have a commission meeting so more folks can attend. So at this time, I'm going to ask, starting with my commissioner, Mr. Jack Black, to make a motion to postpone these proceedings, because this does involve a tax increase, to a time and place or a time and date that can be more readily available to the public at some point. All right. To the voting members here today that seem to have a conflict of interest where they're going to have basically voting themselves a pay increase or benefits, most folks I've talked to think that actually it's improper, and I'm sure you don't think that, but that's what they think. Thought you might want to know. One other thing I want to point out is, as you know, this government's been giving tax breaks to the big companies, and that's been going on for quite a while. And at the same time, then we're up here wanting a tax increase from everybody else. Well, I think we know why we're short of revenue; we're giving it to them. So I guess if you want more revenue, maybe you ought to go knock on their door and get it. It doesn't seem fair, does it? So knowing that, if they are not paying it and we are, aren't we subsidizing these big companies? It looks like we are, handing charity out. So for those of you that plan on voting for the tax increase, and on behalf of those that are hurting, I'm going to go ahead and give you the shirt off those folks' back. It looks like that's what you want, so I'm going to give that to you. And I'm going to go ahead and give you their last dollar. You might as well just go ahead and get it now. And here's one more dollar that you can give to Amazon, because I'm sure they need more charity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Michael Payne. I'm the director of the Rutherford County Community Learning Center. For those of you who don't know, that is a school for at-risk teens. I'm going to address the pay issue first. I am not on, my staff and I, which is only three of us total, we are not on the step raise scale. We are paid on the Rutherford County School System scale, one year behind. Now, the pension and the benefits, yes, we are part of, and my wife is on the staff. I'm here for my colleagues. I have to work with these people in many different areas to run this school. I work with the kids no one wants to work with, and I need their help many times in helping me do the final job, which is end up in this very building and have graduation in May. And I think sometimes, the public and even some of the commissioners, you don't hear how great some of these employees actually are and how hard they work and how nice they are to people that sometimes are not nice to them. So this is my 25th year. I've never been here on this particular day, but I was asked, and I am more than happy. So I'm basically here to urge you to pass this budget. It is a good budget. It was hard, very hard, to work on, and I've seen my share of budgets being worked on. There have been many years where the general fund people, we got nothing, and we accepted it, and we went on. So I urge you, just to think about what I'm saying. I just don't think you really, it's kind of like being a teacher. The only time teaching gets publicity is when things bad go wrong. Right now, we are under Tennessee core curriculum, and they are literally killing us with paperwork and blaming teachers, and it's our fault. We have to accept it, absorb the extra work, move on. And I think the general people that I'm talking about, I've worked so close with them for so many years, you are getting your money's worth. So I ask you, please, pass this budget. It's a good one. It was worked on very hard, and I think none of us deliberately padded anything. Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of our public comment, period. Next on the agenda is elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Mr. Mayor, if this shirt's a medium, I'll take it if no one else wants it.
Help yourself.
I'll let you up the dollars, Carol. Steering has several items for your consideration, commissioners. The first, on your desk, you would find a list of notary candidates, and I'll move for their election.
And a second from Commissioner McAdoo. Any questions on that? All in favor of electing the notaries, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Next, we need to fill two vacancies on the Community Care Board. Steering nominates Mrs. Frankie Johnson and Mr. Mike Nunley. I'll move for their approval, Mr. Chair.
Second from any number, including Commissioner Cook, McAdoo, and Farley. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Next, we need to fill vacancy on the Stone River Regional Library Board, formerly known as the Highland Rim Regional Library Board. Steering nominates Mrs. Catherine Henry. I'll move for her approval, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, then, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, we need to announce two vacancies on the Industrial Development Board and Health and Education and Facilities Board, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
You, Commissioner Gooch. Okay, there's no unfinished business. We're ready for the reports by our standing committees. There is no report from our purchasing committee, so we're ready for Commissioner Ely to begin the discussion on behalf of our Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee.
Item J-2A, General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Employee benefits, election commission, from employee benefits, unemployment compensation $500 to election unemployment compensation $500. Hotel motel tax, parks and fare boards, tourism, increased revenue from the hotel motel tax, $106,000. Increased expenditures, parks and fare boards contributions, $10,600. Tourism contributions, $31,800. For an increase to unassigned fund balance, $63,600. County mayor, from unassigned fund balance, $28,500. This is delinquent tax sales. To other charges, $28,500. County attorney, and the following miscellaneous, both of these items relates to the Eagleville condemnation. From unassigned fund balance, $88,000 to legal services, $88,000. And for miscellaneous, restricted for capital projects, $61,800 to land, $61,800. Resolve this 28th day of June 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes. Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item J-2B, 2012-13 Drug Control Fund Budget Amendments. Proceeds from confiscated property, increased revenue, $258,800. An increase to restricted for public safety, $258,800. Drug enforcement from detectives, $5,000. And restricted for public safety, $6,020. To overtime pay, $10,000 and the related benefits. Resolve this 28th day of June 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Tonto Serino. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
19 yes, motion passes.
Item J-2B, no, I'm sorry. Item J-2C, 2012-2013, General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general purpose school fund be amended according to the schedules attached here too, as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. The first budget amendment is to amend a net increase of $30,550 for substitute teacher pay, and it reduces the regular teacher pay and benefits by that same amount. The rest of the lines in the amendment true up the substitute pay to the various budget line items where the expenditures were incurred. The sublines with increases total $125,950. The decrease lines, $95,400. The second budget amendment is to amend $35,000 in unemployment compensation to the unemployment line items. The third one is to amend $234,987 from budgeted utilities in order to cover additional expenditures, $77,581 in custodial supplies, $20,000 for water and sewer, $38,820 for a Genesis Special Ed bus, and $98,586 for the fuel price adjustments to the bus operator contracts. The fourth amendment real allocates a total of $517,133 in already budgeted expenditures within major functions. The amendment primarily covers contract services, supplies, and equipment. The medical services function real allocates a state grant and includes some labor. The central and other functions real allocates available salary funds to cover additional technology expenditures. And the fifth amendment is a year-end revenue adjustment for the general purpose school fund. The entire amount of the increase, $338,228, is going to increase fund balance. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jeff Jordan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, motion passes.
Item J-2D, 2012-2013, Central Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Central Cafeteria Fund be amended as follows. Food service for an increase totaling $198,864. Decreased revenues totaling $689,527. Increased expenditures totaling $22,733. Decreased expenditures totaling $513,396. Resolve this 28th day of June 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
19 yes, motion passes.
Item J-2E, a resolution authorizing a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of an available grant through the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services for the provision of the Tennessee Certified Drug Court program at the Rutherford County Drug Court in the amount of $107,500, which requires no matching funds for the period of July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services. A copy being attached here too is Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, in the amount of $107,500, requiring no local matching funds. Resolve this 28th day of June 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
19 yes, motion passes.
Item J-2F, a resolution authorizing schedule of services with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services. Whereas the Rutherford County Drug Court does not deny services to eligible individuals who are unable to pay for said services, and whereas the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services will provide payment to Rutherford County based upon a fee schedule for eligible individuals who are unable to pay. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute the authorization to vendor terms and conditions for the alcohol and drug addiction treatment, indigent supervised probation offenders treatment, and the authorization to vendor terms and conditions for the alcohol and drug addiction treatment for indigent driving under the influence offenders. Copies of the same being attached here too, as Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, to accept payment from the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services for payment to the Rutherford County Drug and DUI Court for eligible individuals who are unable to pay for services. Resolve this 28th day of June 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item J-2G, a resolution authorizing Tennessee Agriculture Enhancement Program Grant Application. Whereas Rutherford County has been made aware of the availability of a grant opportunity through the Tennessee Department of Agriculture, Tennessee Agriculture Enhancement Program for the 2013-2014 tree planting season, for planting trees on public lands such as parks, streets, greenways, cemeteries, or other local public places. And whereas the Agriculture Extension Department desires to submit an application for said grant for an amount not to exceed $20,000, which will require a cash match equal to the grant, a 50-50 match, with the allowable match consisting of trees, shipping, purchase, mulch, and contract planting. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit a grant application on behalf of Rutherford County for the Tennessee Agriculture Enhancement Program Grant in an amount not to exceed $20,000. Resolve this 28th day of June 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Jordan, second. Any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item J-2H, a resolution authorizing an inter-fund capital outlay notes for the Blackman Middle School Annex. A resolution authorizing the issuance of inter-fund capital outlay notes in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $7,400,000 of Rutherford County, Tennessee, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said notes, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of and interest on the notes. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Jordan. Any questions on this? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J two I, A Resolution Authorizing Agreement of Resignation, Appointment, and Acceptance in Connection with the Sale of Deutsche Bank to U.S. Bank. Whereas Deutsche Bank National Trust Company is the paying agent for the Rutherford County, Tennessee Series 2004 Refunding Bonds, the Rutherford County, Tennessee Series 2004 General Obligation Bonds, and Rutherford County, Tennessee Series 2005 General Obligation School Refunding Bonds, and the Rutherford County, Tennessee Series 2006 General Obligation School and Public Improvement Bonds. And whereas Deutsche Bank National Trust Company sold its municipal bond trustee business to U.S. Bank National Association and wishes to resign as agent under the governing instruments, and U.S. Bank wishes to be appointed as successor agent and assume all of the duties, obligations, and responsibilities of the agent under the governing instruments. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute the Agreement of Resignation, Appointment, and Acceptance. A copy of the same being attached here too is Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, agreeing to the resignation of Deutsche Bank National Trust Company as the agent for certain Rutherford County, Tennessee bonds, and appointing U.S. Bank National Association as successor agent. Resolve this 28th day of June 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner P. Any discussion? All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item J two I, J two J, excuse me, item J two J, A Resolution Authorizing the Tax Levy in Rutherford County for year 2013-14. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, assembled in regular session on the 28th day of June 2013, that the combined property tax rate for Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013, shall be 2.5652 on each $100 of taxable property, which is to provide revenue for each of the following funds and otherwise conform to the following levies. County General, 67 cents. Ambulance Service Fund, 5.79 cents. Highway Fund, 1.3 cents. General Purpose Schools, $1, 19.3 cents. Education Capital Projects Fund, 4.51 cents. Debt Service, 58.62 cents, for a total of 2.5652. Section Two explains how the business tax will be allocated to funds. Section Three states that sales tax revenue will be divided as follows. Solid Waste Sanitation Fund, 60%. General Fund, 20%. Road and Bridge Fund, 20%. Section Four, quill tax revenue will be divided as follows. General Fund, 30%. Road and Bridge Fund, 30%. General Purpose School Fund, 40%. Section Five, the development tax revenue will be divided as follows. General Fund, 50%. General Debt Service Fund, 50%. Section Six explains how the interest earned on idle funds are distributed. Pass this 28th day of June 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion or questions? Commissioner Jeff Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I'd like to offer an amendment, if I could, please. Those of you who recall, two or three months ago, and I can't remember what, two or three months ago, this commission passed a resolution supporting the new SRO officers. But we passed that resolution depending upon funds available. To increase taxes would indicate to me that those funds aren't available at this time. It would be my motion to amend the General Fund from .6700 cents or dollars to .6574 cents or dollars. That's a reduction of 1.26 cents, or $742,940, specifically to remove 11 new SRO positions. And as I said, as you recall, several months ago, this commission passed a resolution kind of in support of this amendment, I think. And I really do think that we should add those SROs back as funds become available, put them on some type of a scale over the next several years where we can add those resource officers at that time. However, my motion is to amend the County General Fund by a reduction of 1.26 cents, or $742,940, specifically specific to those SRO positions.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Other discussion? Commissioner Jordan?
Well, I beat this drum before, if any of y'all saw the Budget Committee meeting, and I couldn't get a second on a similar motion in Budget Committee. I agree with everything Commissioner Phillips just said. I don't remember this being in our plan before the tragedy in Sandy Hook. I hate to be, I hate to use the term knee-jerk reaction, but I feel a little bit like it is a knee-jerk reaction. I hate to give that one individual in Connecticut that much credit. How many millions of dollars are being spent nationwide because of one guy? And what if that guy had gone on a bus and shot children on a bus? Would we be putting a guard on every single school bus? I mean, this wasn't in our plan. They had SROs full-time at all the elementary schools. It's been our plan for years, to have them split their time, that we have a relationship with the children and all. I haven't seen any studies that show how this is going to work. I agree with Commissioner Phillips again. If this is, something needs to be done, let's prove it through studies, let's implement it slowly and judiciously, and, you know, and just take our time. But I just think this is an appropriate motion, and we ought to do this a little slower. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Shaffer, and then Commissioner P., excuse me.
Well, I've talked to quite a lot of people on this subject, and they really like to put an SRO in every school. Because, again, it comes down, if you don't, somebody's got to play God. And they say, these children aren't worth it as much. And, you know, and I don't think it's just Sandy Hook. But people in the school feel the safety factor, how many non-custodial parents come with, wanting their student, their son or daughter, to go with them, and then somebody's got to stop them. And it's, and you talk about Sandy Hook, but you can pick up your paper, or look on the internet, twice a week, you're going to see about shootings somewhere around this country. And just the thought, it's not going to stop something like Sandy Hook, but the deterrent factor of having them out there, the patrol car, and a sheriff in the school, I think, makes a commoness in the school, for the administration, the staff, the teachers, and the students there. So that's why I can't, I can't go along with them. If we, if we cut, if we cut out of half the schools and try and set them up with switching days and all this, that type thing, you know, why don't we cut them out of all the schools until we can fund them all? Or, you know, who wants to play God? I guess we talked about it in Budget, and it's up to the, going to be up to the sheriff to do it.
Commissioner P.
Of course, I'm on Budget also, and I think I originally brought this to public safety, and I'm here to declare this morning, this is not a knee-jerk reaction. You know, the Sandy Hook problem occurred last year. It's been at least six months, if not longer than that, since this occurred. I think, at that time, when I brought it up, I wanted us to think about it so it wouldn't be a knee-jerk reaction. I wanted you to have the opportunity to contemplate what our needs were in these schools. Now, I think some of you may not recall the schools before we had the SROs, but you'd frequently see in the newspapers, gun confiscated at this school, drugs busted over here. You don't see those kind of activities. Yes, they're still there, and yes, these officers are a deterrent for that. But not only that, these officers are bringing to the children that they go to, to these younger children in elementary schools, a respect and a trust for law enforcement that a lot of our young children in the communities never got from their parents. And I think that's one of the most important things that we can instill in our citizens, is a trust and respect for our law enforcement and our laws. But I would urge you to vote this amendment down. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Young.
Well, I'm going to have to vote against this amendment. I'm in support of SROs at all the schools, and the reason why isn't for the protection. It's there for being, to build that relationship with the students. Do we need them there for protection? Yeah. We have more kids die being left in cars than we've had shot in schools here in Rutherford County. We've had more children die in house fires. But yet, right now, we got volunteers. I hope they come. I know they do, but I hope they come if your house catches on fire, because that's what we got. But the reason why I really support this is if we do it, Commissioner Stevens originally brought that motion, if we do it in a fiscally responsible manner, we handicap every department head for the next two or three or four years, because they'll never get another position, because SROs will be the priority. We're growing too fast. The ambulance service is going to have to have another, ambulance in service. The sheriff's going to have to add more patrol officers. You know, some of these other departments are going to have to have other positions, and by, by just funding these SROs and putting that priority, we handicap every other department head first. That's wrong. We got to look this equally across the board. By doing this now, we get this past us, and we can start looking at other things. We need paid firefighters in this county. We have none. You know, and we're going to handicap ourselves for the next four years and beyond because we're putting these SROs over priority. I think it's great that they're in the schools. Is it going to cost us? Yes. You know, I hate paying the taxes, but I'm paying them too. You know, I woke up this morning, I had $187 in my checking account. I don't know if any other commissioner had that, that little amount in there, but I did, so. But it's the truth. I mean, if we're going to do it, let's just do it. And there's no sense in trying to delay something and hurt these other department heads, because that's the adverse reaction by not doing it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Farley.
These SROs, and I respectfully disagree with the amendment that's on the floor, but these SROs do more than protect our kids from shooters. They are, they prevent a lot of things as far as custodial parents coming in, taking care of situations. They, like Commissioner P. said, they, they gain the respect of these kids. You know, I've seen these guys and girls at these schools operate. If they can save one kid from committing suicide, or anything, just by talking to them, that one life is worth 1 point whatever cent to raise the property taxes to save one of those kids' lives. So it's not about protecting them from shooters, it's among, about a lot of other things that these guys and girls are doing every day in our school system. So I respectfully disagree with the amendments that's on the floor, and ask you to vote that amendment down. Thank you.
All right, is any other discussion? Are you ready to vote? Commissioner Sandlin?
Commissioners, I'm on Budget as well, and, you know, we've, we've talked about this, and I think it was good amendment that Commissioner Stevens had put in front of us here, you know, a few months ago. But unfortunately, I can't say which ones not to put them in. I mean, my, my two kids are in public schools, and they both have SROs. And I've seen what they've done, you know, in the elementary level and in the middle school level, and also in the high school level. And there's a lot of stuff we don't hear about, we don't see, that just gets taken care of, because these men and women in the school system, and what they're doing in these SROs. So I'm not for this 10-cent tax increase, but I'm definitely for this SRO project. And I commend you, Commissioner, on making a stride here. We got to look a little deeper in what else we're going to do. But this is one project right here that I'm going to have to stand behind and vote for.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? All right, Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you. Just one more quick follow-up. The comments that I've heard, I don't disagree with any of them. I think that they're needed too. I think that's what the resolution said, that they're needed, but let's do it in a fiscally responsible manner. And I also say that I haven't heard anyone say that those schools have SROs. They do have SROs, they're in those schools right now. And I think that they can perform those duties in the same manner that they've been performing them at. I just don't think that some of those schools need a full-time SRO at this particular time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. If there's no other discussion then, I assume we're ready to vote. So the motion, the amendment is to reduce County General's rate from .67 to about 1.26 pennies, and remove the 11 new SRO positions that would be reflected in the elementary schools. So a vote yes is to reduce that and to eliminate the SRO positions. A vote no is to leave the budget on County General at .67. So please cast your votes. Is there any questions about what you're voting on? Please cast your votes then.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
None yes, 12 no, motion fails.
All right, do we have, so we do have a motion and a second on the tax levy? Is there any other discussion on the tax levy? There, Commissioner Young, please.
Well, I'm probably one of the votes that people don't know how I'm going to vote on this tax levy. I wasn't here when, I had to step out to leave when the, the vote on the insurance, and it was a 10 to 10 vote, and the tie with the mayor. Do I agree with everything in this budget? Absolutely not. But the problem is, for me to win my one little battle here, I'm going to lose the war. I battled with that man right there more than probably anybody up here, but he's done a really good job. Do we disagree a lot? Yeah, we disagree a lot. But he's right on this budget. You know, I'm, I'm a public employee, not for this county. I have no interest in this budget at all for personal gain whatsoever. But I know what it's like to be on the bottom of the pay scale. I've been there seven years, and it's hard. I'm single, I'm not married, I don't have children, but I pay my house payment every month. It takes more than one paycheck to pay my house payment. Do I want this tax increase? No. Is it needed? Yes. Is there a perfect storm this year? Yes, there is a perfect storm. We had what happened with the property assessor and the values. We were dependent on a certain amount of money coming in. The school opening, that's a huge cost to us. We have to do that. I've said it before, I've stood in front of this commission before and said, I wish the school board could set the ad valorem rate for what they need. If they did that, we wouldn't be raising the taxes, the school board would, and the people can get mad at them. That's the truth. But I get the finger pointed at me, and it doesn't bother me. I promise you that. I tell you where I can't sleep at night, though, knowing we got county employees on welfare. And the same people that complain about their taxes getting raised are the same people that complain because people are on welfare. We're just continuing the cycle here. And we do have county employees that are on welfare, and that is not right. When they're bringing home $22,000 a year and got kids to take care of, that's hard. This is a hard decision. But the right decision is to support it. Do I know there's wasting the budget? Yes. You can go back and look at the public safety meetings, these department heads probably hate me sometimes because I wear them out on certain things. The mayor knows it, and we've, you know, we've fought about it, and, you know, we'll find a different way to move along and save money. We always do. There's things that we can do to save money down the road. Buyouts for retirees next year. We've got a lot of county employees that we need to look at. Will that call- Will that cost us a little bit, but save us a lot in the long run by reducing that payroll? That's what a lot of the general public wants, is us to reduce that payroll, because that's where our increase is. So, if we buy some of these employees out that have been there a long time, we can do that, and we can reduce that payroll back down. It's too late this year. We gotta do some smart things. We gotta consolidate stuff. I've beat it with a drum every chance I get. We need to consolidate our dispatch and have one dispatch in the county government. I think that'll happen eventually. That's the smarter government people want. Are people gonna be happy about this tax increase? No. But I was one, and I was the one on the fence, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end up supporting it now. Do I, do I support everything in this budget? No. But we gotta move forward, and we gotta continue to look and find things where we can save money. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anything else? I see no one else rising. We're ready to vote then. Please cast your votes on the tax levy at 2.5652.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
11 yes, 10 no. Motion passes.
Item K to J2K, a resolution authorizing appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County for year 2013-14. Be it resolved by the commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, on the 28th day of June 2012, that the amounts hereafter set are hereby appropriated for the purpose of meeting the expenses of various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the capital outlay and for meeting the payment of principal and interest on the county's debt maturing during the fiscal year, beginning July 1, 2013, and ending June 30, 2014, according to the following schedule. For the general fund, $83,110,306. Rutherford County Economic Development Fund, $243,745. Solid Waste Sanitation Fund, $4,208,265. Ambulance Service Fund, $12,640,859. Special Purpose Fund, $29,989. Drug Control Fund, $364,610. Highway Fund, $9,145,289. General Purpose School Fund, $300,5,565. Central Cafeteria Fund, $19,89,953. Education Capital Projects Fund, $2,466,383. And the Debt Service Fund, $50,482,817. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Schaefer. Any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes.
Chairman, excuse me.
Excuse me.
I need to read my conflict of interest statement, please.
Sorry about that. I was ahead of myself.
Because I am a retired employee of the Rutherford County Board of Education, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
And Commissioner P, Schaefer, Phillips, and Serino.
Because my wife is an employee of the Rutherford County School Board, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Mr. Chairman, remember, next time we have a roll call vote, we start with Commissioner from the 3rd district, okay? Since he wants to be fourth. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. And this is probably the last time I'm gonna have to read this, because it affects me a whole lot. Because I am an employee of Rutherford County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my voice answer only to my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
We go, okay, I guess it's better just go down the line. And Commissioner Black. Excuse me.
Because my wife is an employee of Rutherford County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and to the citizens of this body, that this body represents.
All right, Commissioner Phillips. Now, excuse me, Commissioner Jernigan is next coming down.
Because I'm an employee of Rutherford County Highway Department, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my constituents and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represent.
Commissioner Phillips.
Because I'm an employee of the Rutherford County School Board, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my constituents and the citizens of this body it represents.
And Commissioner Serino. All right then. Now, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
12 yes, none no. Motion passes.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for a difficult four or five months we've been working on this, but I do appreciate your participation and your input as we've worked together on this. Let's see, next, we are ready for continuation on our committee reports. Health and Education Committee, there is no report. We do have one item on the Property Management Committee. We call on Commissioner McAdoo. Let me give you a piece of paper here.
This resolution here, it didn't come before our committee, but it's no funds that is gonna be attached to this, and so therefore, we just brought it out before the full commission. Am I right, Mr. Mayor?
That's correct.
Resolution, whereas the attached lease agreement by and between the City of Eagle and Rutherford County, Tennessee, provides for opening and operation of a satellite branch of the Rutherford County Clerk's Office inside the Eagleville City Hall. A copy of said lease agreement being attached here, here to, as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein at length verbatim, as if set forth herein else. Whereas, it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into said lease agreement. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and they hereby authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the lease agreement with the City of Eagle, according to its terms and provisions, resolved this 28th day of June 2013, and I so move.
Second from Commissioner Serino. All right, all of you in favor of this, please say aye. Commissioner Schaefer.
Is this gonna result in any staffing increase, or how are they gonna manage to staff this office out there?
All right, we'll let our clerk, Ms. Lisa Crowell here, I wanna say, she's done a great job getting this done at no cost to the county, and I think she can comment. Ms. Crowell, is the answer to that question, there will be no staff increasing?
No.
And thank her for doing this and expanding our services into the western part of our county, into Eagleville. All right, any other questions? All right then, all in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, there's no report from Public Safety, no report from Public Works or Planning, and now we have one item from our Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee, and Mr. Coggan. And Mr. Coggan, we do have with us in attendance the Director of the Water and Sewer Department for the City of Murfreesboro, Mr. Darren Gore, who can address any questions if they may, may be needed.
Commissioners, this is an item that Steering did not hear, and it was not on our previous agenda for our meeting this month. However, this is, because of time constraints for the City of Murfreesboro, the only way they can get this done, if I'm explaining this right, is to petition the county commission to approve this annexation of 3.27 acres of agricultural land in order to expand the Sinking Creek wastewater treatment plant. So, Mr. Gore is here. After I read this, if we have any questions for him, feel free to suspend the rules and let him address us. Whereas the City of Murfreesboro petitioned the county commission to waive the moratorium imposed by subdivision A1 of TCA 6-51-122, as amended by Chapter 441 of the Public Acts of 2013, for city ordinance 13-0A-01, annexing 3.27 acres of agricultural land for expansion of the Sinking Creek wastewater treatment plant. And whereas the city would suffer substantial and demonstrable financial injury if the annexation of this tract does not become operative before May 15, 2014. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that the board waives the moratorium imposed on annexation ordinance 13-0A-01 of the City of Murfreesboro, effective upon adoption of this resolution by majority vote, resolved this 28th day of June 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Phillips. Now, are there questions here that need explaining more fully? Commissioner Jordan?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and ask Mr. Gore to come up and explain this a little bit, because I'm a little bit uncomfortable with this. I know the property owner there, according to this, it's Mr. Hord. I don't see Mr. Hord or any of the family representatives here, and I just got a bad feeling about this, and, you know, is...
All right, so, if, second from Commissioner Phillips, all in favor of suspending the rules, just please say aye.
Aye.
All right. So, Mr. Gore, you might give them a bit of history on what's happened here on this legislation that our state body has passed and made this necessary.
Sure. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you allowing me to come before you today. I'm used to coming last, after everybody's left. I'm usually the city council, the last gal on the list, so I'm kinda used to this, to this role, but, and I don't wanna give, so I go kinda fast, because usually by the time I get up there, the mayor and the city council are kinda doing this, like, okay, let's get out of here. So, if I go too fast, just slow me down. Basically, our Sinking Creek wastewater treatment plant is operating at about 85% to 90% capacity. It's a 16 million gallon a day rated plant. When we get to 80% of our rated capacity, the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation asks us to start planning for expansion. So, we've, we've gone above our design criteria of where the state typically wants us to start expanding. So, we actually started to, this Sinking Creek, it's a headworks facility in 2009. A headworks facility is basically a screening facility, takes out the large debris and the grit before it gets into the microbiological process of the, of the, of the plant. We went, we suspended that, that design, because we did, we were looking at a decentralized plant, what was going to be more financially or fiduciary responsible, versus upgrading the central plant or going out and building several small decentralized satellite plants. That study took about a year and a half. It came back that, that upgrading the Sinking Creek, the central plant, was the most, best financial option. So, what we've done is, this is just a component of the overall expansion. I should probably have a pointer here, but you can see the area outlined in blue is the area that's necessary to expand what I'm calling the headworks component of the plant. What you see in the green lines and the magenta lines, those are existing forest mains or existing, we call them repurified lines, it's effluent, reuse effluent lines, that are currently on the property that we've purchased in the past. So, we've tried to carve out as little as possible necessary just to get this one plant, this component, expanded. When we go from our 16 million gallon a day to our 24, our larger plant expansion where the micrological process will be expanded, and the sand filters and the UV disinfection component of the plants expanded, we will not require any more property. So, it's just this one little 3.2 acres, which a lot of it's already encumbered with, with easements. We have talked with the hordes now. They did oppose, we did have to, to go through with an eminent domain condemnation. They have contested that, and it's in the courts as far as, we do have right of possession that was granted in April, but we are working out, I mean, we're gonna have to, they didn't like the price that we were offering, and we had to go through a, it's a state revolving fund loan program. It's the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation program, using federal loans to, to fund this component of it. So, we had to go through their, their acquisition process, which involves an appraisal and a, a reappraisal, or review appraisal. So, really, the city or staff doesn't have any control over that. They go out and look at the comps and, and do the appraisals and whatnot, and that, that amount is tendered into, into the courts, and the judge can determine whether or not that's fair and reasonable. And again, that's, we, we do have right of possession. We're just asking that this be annexed into the city so that we don't have to go through a, we don't have to go through a redundant review process between the city and the county. I think it's just clean things up and make it, make the project run smoother. So, I don't know if that answers your questions, or...
I was wondering if you actually have possession of the property, and apparently you do, because you have gone through the eminent domain.
Yes, sir.
And I do know that the state's got a moratorium on forest annexation till next spring, which some people may not realize, I know that's gonna be in through planning, that you can't, last year, you could've just annexed this, and we wouldn't have never seen you.
That's correct.
So, this is just basically, you're gonna do the project anyway, to clean it up, put it with the city planning, instead of it being halfway in, halfway out, because you've already condemned and taken the property anyway.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
That answers some of my questions, because you've already got possession of the property.
Commissioner Farley.
Darren, is this gonna create, whether or not, what to call it, an island? Is it gonna cause any other residents to be annexed into the city by doing this?
No, sir. This is just an extension. If you see the, the exhibit, it's just, it's a 3.2 acre area just adjoining the existing plant.
So, the property there beside it is actually in the city limits now?
Yes, sir. It's contiguous, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Commissioner Sandlin?
Jim, I was gonna ask you our involvement on the condemnation part. What role do we play as a county on that, or do we?
We, we do not have any role in the condemnation. This has nothing to do with us, condemnation. All they're doing is asking permission to annex, which, as Commissioner Jordan pointed out, they, right now, in, in the state of Tennessee, no cities can annex anywhere until approximately a year from the date that legislation was last passed, with the exception being these kind of situations, when they come before the county commission and get authority to annex. Again, that has nothing to do with the condemnation, it's just annexation, and they're in a bind. They don't wanna have to go through this process twice, and so that's where we are. But we have no role issue or anything in, in terms of the condemnation case. No. No liability, no exposure.
Commissioner P.
Just to make sure that I understood you correctly, you say the, the hordes are willing to sell this property at their price. You're just not happy with their price. Is that what this boils down to? You're wanting to pay less money?
Well, the, there was a counteroffer proposed, and we have a acquisition process that we can only go by the appraisal, and plus, we had the federal acquisition process, protocol that we had to adhere to. So, I, I don't wanna speak for the hordes, but I do believe if the price was right, that they would, they would sell. They, they've sold us all the easements and, and in the past. I just, again, don't wanna speak for them, but I think if we had doubled or tripled our price, we probably could've gotten the property.
Well, you just said what's bothering me, they're not here. Our, our committee that normally sees this did not hear it. You know, we're just now hearing it here. You're talking about... You're talking about annexed property, taking property from somebody, and I'm very big on property rights. And, I personally, before, I'd be willing to vote yes on this. One of the Hords stand here and say, "Yes, we can proceed with this," but I'm just not comfortable with it not having gone through our committee process, and I say, "Y'all can wait in line like everybody else."
We do have the property, just to make that.
And, Mr. Gore, you might... In other words, tell them a little bit about the timing of what you're trying to do. Maybe that might be...
Well, again, it's... We're being pushed by the Tennessee... By TDAC, and we have to abide by what our effluent guidelines or permit that we put into the river. We have certain mass loading limits that we have to adhere to, and so that's what really predicates us, the state saying, "Thou shalt expand once you start reaching that 80% threshold." So, we have been on this track, I would say, since two... Or, on this tract of expanding the plant since 2008, 2009, and it's just gotten to the point, we've got the SRF, we've got the loan secured. It's a $37 million, basically, line of credit from the SRF, State Revolving Fund folks, that they have timelines that they need to get that money spent. It's low interest money. There's some principal forgiveness on that money, so we like that part of it. It keeps our water and sewer rates lower, but we're just... We need this screening facility to go in first before we can get the overall plant expanded, and we're having... We're hoping to have that done, that bid out hopefully by this time next year.
Mr. Jordan.
I started this by getting up first, and I've known the Hord family forever. They've been there for generations, but this has nothing to do with annexation. That's already happened. This is just the jurisdiction who basically oversees the codes inspection, things like that, so I don't have a problem at all with this. That's the fight between the Water and Sewer Department and the Hords on the value of the property. We're not... We don't have a dog in that hunt. This is gonna happen one way or the other. We might as well help the county taxpayers or city ratepayers, and if they can save a little money by getting this project down the road, then I'm okay with it.
Commissioner P.
Well, it seems to me that you're at the wrong place. I mean, the state of Tennessee is requiring you to make these expansions, and yet the state of Tennessee also is keeping you from being able to do that. I would think you need to be talking to those folks, and you're getting some of the heartache that we get from a lot of the resolutions that come down from the state, mandatory spending that we have to do and end up with tax increases. So, you know, I still don't have any sympathy there.
And, we did try to talk to them. They didn't listen to us.
Okay. Are there any other questions of Mr. Gore? If there are no questions of Mr. Gore, then thank you very much. Any other discussion from any of our commissioners? All right then. We're ready to vote on this, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Let me remind you that this motion will not pass unless there's a two-thirds majority vote, so if that affects any of your thinking, that's part of the statute that the state of Tennessee has passed as well. All right, so has everyone voted? Record the votes.
19 yes, 2 no. Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any other business to come before this body? Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. You have in front of you a copy of the draft subdivision regulations that the Planning Commission has been working on this year. And, just for your information and for your study, most of those regulations are very, very similar, if not identical, to what they've been in the past, but a number of them have been updated. The Planning Commission is scheduling... Is planning to schedule a public hearing at its next... I'm sorry, at its August the 12 evening meeting. That would be a 6:00 PM meeting. So, just for your information and to keep you guys up to date, the subdivision regulations draft is before you. Thank you.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Mr. Chairman, tonight is Elaine Agger Park Blackman BBQ. So, I know it's not election year, so it won't be as many folks out there as it will be next year, I guess, but come out for some good music, good fun, family fun, be a little auction going on, and some great barbecue, and just some good hometown folks out there that you need to meet that you hadn't seen since last year you was out there. So, get your tickets, get out there early. I think they start serving at 5, somewhere around in there. If that's too early, well, then hold on, they'll feed you in a little while. So, we appreciate you coming out. That's Elaine Agger Park tonight, Blackman BBQ.
Commissioner Tiffany Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I'd like to say a quick thank you to Mr. Nolan and those commissioners who were able to come out to the landfill for the tour. It was very helpful to me, I know, and some of the comments other... From other commissioners that I've heard, it was helpful for them, too, so.
Anyone else have any business? Well, thank you all again for your continued support of a difficult struggle sometimes we have with some really complex issues, but we do appreciate us all doing our very best to work together, and I thank you very much for being so professional in this whole process. We are adjourned.